All right, thank you, everybody. I have Councilor Stasich now on the direction.
Thank you, Councilor. For this particular motion for myself, it's not something that I need to support for each of. In fact, I don't even have an appetite to explore it moving forward. I think the more. The more enforcement officers that we have doing active traffic control and management, the better for our community. It helps control the flow of traffic, it helps uh keep our citizens state safe, helps control. Speeding and other, you know, uh stop sign running, red light running, other traffic violations that can put people at risk. Further to that, I feel the RCMP's time is probably better served. In investigating major crime in our community, which we do receive quite a, quite a lot of complaints about. I think their time is probably better focused on that rather than the. You know, sitting out on Highway sixteen doing active speed patrol. And even from a fiscal responsibility standpoint. Community peace officers are a fraction of the cost of what an RCMP officer is, so. For, for me, it just makes sense to have our, our peace officers doing active traffic enforcement. Rather than the RCMP, however, I do feel the RCMP play part in the traffic enforcement as well. And I don't see why it can't be a combined service. I do have a question for administration. When. Our peace officers are doing uh active traffic control. When they pull a citizen over, do they do the same type of? I believe they call it running the person's license. Do, do they do that same type of background check? When they issue a ticket as the RCMP would do?
Through the chair, yes, they do. Uh they run the license plate to obtain information of the registered owner when they have been registration. Date and they are insured, they find out all of that information now. Radio through dispatch. Uh and once they also get notified if they have. Somebody that has a warrant possibly, or if they're not somebody that they want to approach their vehicle. And at that time, they look by the RCMP to it.
So that was the one thing that I wanted to get clarification on between, you know, whether the RCMP or um. Peace officers, there's any difference in identifying that individual that's in that vehicle and if they pose a risk to the. To the officer or to the community and. And that uh. It, it, that, that makes me comfortable in knowing that whether it's a peace officer or an RCMP, if that person driving that vehicle. Does pose a risk, the peace officer would know it and can call the RCMP and. To deal with it further, whether it's criminal matter or safety matters. Uh that's why I'm not gonna support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Stasich. And I have myself and I too will support it and, and for that reason also too is because. Not only is it traffic enforcement, but it's also enforcement of the laws of our community of the province and. Finding individuals potentially that could, you know, that the RCMP did not cook, did not. Come across, right? So I think the more people that way, knowing they have warrants for rests, knowing that. A huge factor with the registration uh and no insurance is a big risk as well, so. Uh I just can't support this. I, I think that it's important part of the, the love of the service. Thank you.
Yes, if I may, Mr. Chair, uh to add to that, there, there is another differentiated uh factor between the RCP. Or a police force and a peace officers uh. If they do it, conduct a stop of the vehicle and they. Take off, they, they don't stop. Our peace officers cannot pursue them. They have to notify the RCP. And then they, they take care of that. They're not permitted to pursue.
CEO.
Thank you through the chair to members of council. I wouldn't recommend the course of action put forward and, and this one's just from a best practice policy perspective, because. Typically, the split that you wanna have when it comes to policy is council dictates what we do. Administration decides how we do it, right? And it's that interface of who's taking the lead and it's. Uh I see this as an administrative responsibility to ensure that there isn't. You know, a great deal of overlap or without disease when we're doing enforcement activities, but. You know, typically, that's the split that you wanna keep in mind when looking at policy is. Dictating what, what we do and to what level we do it. And then how we do that is a administrative responsibility.
Okay, thank you, CEO and Councilor Taylor.
What you say is true. Why do we even have a municipal enforcement service policy? Why don't we just have an enforcement service policy that says? Here's the enforcement stuff we do with town without distinction as to whether by law or RCMP to it. Isn't that? That doesn't make sense with what you just said.
And through, through the chair, to members of council. So what we're dictating is because we do have. By law services and that is a service that we decide on, council makes the decision on whether we have peace officer services. As well as RCMP and to what level we have that. So those have been dictated and to what level each one of those. Provides service to the community. The services of the community are outlined for each, each of those. So we know what we're. We're talking about and what each one of those different uh. Groups actually do. But that's dictating what they do. Not how they do it, correct? You know, I see this almost similar saying when we're looking at policy, it's saying. And that will be the responsibility of this employee. Or this employee will. Manage this program for example, and that's kind of the equation that I'm making to it. That it be a municipal response or sorry, administrative responsibility, I think, who's going to do it, but.
Hey, thank you. Uh councils, we do have a direction. Uh any? Other round of comments on it or called question? All right, so I'm gonna call the direction to question.
His direction wasn't recorded.
When? I'll read it up. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
If I can have it. On the screen?
No, yeah, for Taylor's direction was not recorded when he made a direction. He didn't record it, he just.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
It wasn't. If you could repeat your direction, please, then Councilor Taylor.
You know, I'm, if we didn't finish the direction and then there is no direction, I'm quite comfortable moving on. Unless you want me to.
Well, we've debated this for a number of reasons, so I think it's important to capture that.
Sure, I can do that.
Yeah.
That council direct administration. To modify this LOC. Such that the primary mandate for enforcing the Traffic Safety Act and speeding.
Slow down. Yeah, yeah.
Rest with the RCMP.
Again. Modify this LOC.
Uh this LOS.
Oh, I know that.
Sorry, I was thinking some else. Such that the primary mandate for enforcing the Traffic Safety Act and speeding. Rest with the RCMP.
Can you slow down a little bit when you're speaking, please?
That the primary mandate. Uh for enforcing. The Traffic Safety Act. And speeding. Rest with the RCMP.
Right, rest.
Rests with the RC.
Thank you.
May I view Councilor Taylor?
Sure, and I got to add a few words.
If you'd like.
Yeah, this is about accountabilities and who's responsible. This is not about the. The level of the speeding enforcement in town. This was erroneously assumed. This is about trying to make it clear as to uh who's responsible.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Taylor. So. We can please have that up on the screen, Council. Thank you. I'd like to call the question then that the committee direct administration to modify this level of service. Such that the primary mandate for enforcing the. The Traffic Safety Act and speeding rest with the RCMP. Council, please vote now.
I just got kicked out. I'll vote for it.
Okay. Uh so, what am I missing?
Me.
You.
Yeah, I was kicked out too.
You were kicked out too?
Yeah.
Some sports are bad enough to kick me out.
I mean, no. Okay, perfect. All right, and that is defeated five against one. Uh Councilor Taylor for, Rest of Council against. Thank you. All right, and Council, we still have uh. Recommended direction, Councilor McGee.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make the motion that council affers the draft protective services municipal. Enforcement level of service policy PS twenty-three oh seven to a future regular meeting of council.
Thank you, Councilor McGee. Do you want to speak to it?
No, thank you.
All right, Council, you have a direction, any comments or questions? And seeing none, I'd like to call that then the question that committee refers the draft protective services municipal enforcement level of service policy. PS dash two-three oh seven to a future regular meeting of council. Council, please vote now. And Councilor Taylor?
We're almost there, but I'll put my hand up.
Okay, now. And that was for Oregon.
Well, I'm in favor.
In favor, okay. That is carried unanimously. Thank you, Council. Council, is there any other matters for this LOS policy PS dash two-three oh seven? And seeing none. We do have an information item. This is the July twenty-twenty-three sanitary sewer backup engineering report. And I'm gonna hand this over to the administration.
Thank you, Chair. I will turn this one over to Mr. McLaughlin. Good afternoon, Council. I do have this agenda item to uh report to you today. Uh I wanna start off by apologizing for a correction of the date. This. This flooding happened in August twenty-fourty-two. I wanna be very clear about that. And so uh when that event happened, there was a number of. Uh sewer backups on the Collins Road. We uh engaged McAulney to. Uh investigate to uh help determine uh what uh what caused the backups and the, and the reason behind it. And ultimately also included with this report, um at the end of it is a flow chart that our insurance company has provided us that we're trying to follow in terms of. Uh managing these claims. So if you've seen that diagram, that's, that's where we're uh we're trying to follow. And so the report uh looked uh C, CCTV of our, our sewer systems, they. Uh they did smoke testing to see if there was improper connections to our uh our system that didn't determine anything. Uh they, they found a couple of small things in the sewer system, but the report's very clear that those, those things did not contribute to the. Uh the flooding. Uh the. They did uh provide a couple of recommendations on improvements that we can make to our system to. Uh mitigate similar problems in the future, uh which is mainly trying to. Uh waterproof our manholes so that they don't uh take. In water when our storm sewer is over, overcharged. But uh you know, the storm sewer is only designed to a one in five year, which is very normal to Alberta. Uh as part of preparing this, I even reviewed some Alberta. Uh standards, not only our, our own, and the, the one in five years uh is what was in those. Think any questions?
Okay, thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Council, any questions on this uh information item? Councilor Taylor?
Yeah, had to. So. I was thinking of seeking some sort of reimbursement for. The claims that have been put in for the people for reasons that I could read later. But um. If I was to seek that, you know, I've talked to Jordan about this. If I was to pursue that course. And offer some sort of partial re, repayment for the backlog full presenters to the affected, the ten affected residents. Would there be any legal implications to the town with respect to the insurance company claims in future?
Yeah, through the chair, I, I, I can touch with that. I don't see any uh. Implications when it comes to. Uh our insurers on this. I think uh there's a risk that. They may not uh. Pay for the actual compensate or for the compensation for the. For the homeowners, because I don't know if the, the insurance company would see us at fault and that would be a business decision. That would have to be made by us, but I don't believe that we'd have that covered by insurance. Um but other than that, I don't see any. Implications on that to be, on that.
I didn't quite understand that. What's the risk?
When it comes to insurance specifically.
Yeah.
Um I, I think that the risk would be that if we did go to our insurers and say, we do wanna compensate uh. You know, these, these homeowners, I think the risk would be. That they would look at the report and they would come to the conclusion that they're not gonna cover. So whatever fifty percent. Uh that we would like to, if we wanted to compensate those homeowners, I think that would likely be out of our.
So they, they, they will be covering, they, our insurance company will be covering. This fif, this money that they paid, paid for the back valve replacement, they're gonna get reimbursement from their own insurance companies.
Oh, sorry, through the chair. I was talking about just us and our insurance company. I, I think if, I don't think if we make the decision, our, our own insurer. Uh insurance company is going to call this and us. I don't know, I, I don't see any major implications for compensating. The homeowner and their own insurance. Um I think that would. Based on the cost of that backflow preventer, my assumption is that if we did want to. Pay for half of it. I don't know if that's actually covered by their own whole insurance. I think that's uh. The responsibility of the homeowner and I don't know what the insurance company paid for that, so I don't see. I, I don't believe there would be. Very much risk in us compensating a homeowner for that backflow prevention.
Okay, regarding the first risk, why would we be at risk? For receiving um an insurance payment for something that we never paid out? That's what I heard you say.
Sorry, through the chair, my only, my only point when it came to us is the municipality. It's the risk is that our insurance company is unlikely to. Repay us if we decide that we want to compensate the homeowners.
Repay us for what?
For the cost of the.
Oh, I see. Okay, that's fine. So that's fine. Of course, I want.
Okay.
I had a one full.
Sure.
Can, can you tell us what the cost of that claim the uh these ten affected people are putting forward is? And how much it works out per person roughly?
Uh through the chair, I'm not aware of that, that number. We're talking of both the entirety of the insurance claim.
Nope, it's the backflow preventers.
Um I, I don't believe we're aware of the actual costs of the backflow preventers. If we did wanna look into the costs of that specific piece of infrastructure, we could serve and bring that report to council, but I don't believe we have the specific costs on.
All right, okay.
The council, the bars and then council will give me.
Well, I had a different question, but I sat there and I just wanted to follow up and, and, and I guess I'm, I'm curious. Why would we buy? Participate in buying for these ten guys and not for the three other three thousand hundred houses in town?
Well, I can explain that if I took my motion forward.
Well, I'm just, I'm curious why we would sort of select these ten people to. Buy their.
Sure, do you want me to?
So if you can go through the chair, please. Is, is that a question directly to Councilor McGee or is that?
I, I put it out there and I go, why would we select ten people to, to do that? Or and I guess then to administration, would that open us up in the future if there were other issues then for citizens to come back and say? Hey, you finally Collins, can we have one maple?
Through the chair, uh. My perspective is there is risk in setting precedents um. You know, especially when we're getting into an area of uh that's clearly homeowner responsibility. I think it's a. I do think there's some risk in getting into that. Uh you know, you can look at circumstances, but. From an administrative perspective, the fear is that exception always becomes the rule. Uh. So I, I do think there's some risk uh.
Thank you. I have Councilor McGee and then Councilor Taylor.
Yeah, I guess, and I mean, feel free to jump in if I have anything that actually jumbled up. Through, through the houses that I've purchased in the past. Whether it be through the homeowner's inspection on the front end of things or just being a homeowner. One of the things I don't ever remember being mentioned was whether or not a property I purchased. Uh did have or didn't have in the municipality uh backflow prevention. And again, the reason I bring it up is because I really don't think it was part of my homeowner's sort of inspection process. So I guess if we have, you know, Joe and Jane who come to town or they are moving within town, they buy a house. Where do they go to find out that information about whether or not they're protected? Because this is, this isn't for myself. As a citizen in town, the first time I've seen this happen where I've heard somebody's had a backflow issue. And then after the fact, they say, well, number one, I didn't know I had it. And number two, now it's costing me thousands of dollars worth of damage. And then somebody's telling me, well, it was your responsibility. So I feel like there's an important communication piece that's missing. So our homeowners know, do I even have one of these? And if I don't, you know, how can I go about protecting myself? Yada, yada, yada.
Administration.
Through, through the chair, uh you, you, you do raise a good point. I've recently purchased a, a house here in Hidden. I don't know if I have one. I, 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 I have, I have a spot of engagement where there's a piece of wood that if I pry it open, it's probably there, but I don't know that. Uh it wasn't done as part of my home inspection. Um. But that doesn't take the, the, the onus off of me. Uh I do wanna point out that, that it's, it is a. A complex system because some houses also have weeping tile systems. And it's how the weeping tile and the backflow preventer are both connected. Because uh if you had a. Backflow preventer and then your weeping tile pumpout was tied into your sewer on the. On your side of the backflow preventer, you could have a situation where our sewer is overrun. The backflow preventer shuts off and your weeping tile starts pumping. To the sewer, which is then causing your own backup. So it, it's, it's a complicated system and it's not till you. Get into the specifics of each individual house, would you have to determine the best course of action? I mean. Those weeping tiles should be pumping to surface. That's what they should be doing. I know lots of people find it more convenient to pump it to their sewer pipe, uh but that's not where it belongs. Um. And yeah, it, it, it's a difficult situation and I'm not sure how to actually. Get that education out there. I mean, we do have a very good standard. I've reviewed it and it's, it, it even has. Uh it is even covered the scenario that if you're tied to the storm system with a weeping, with a we, with a sump system. Uh it will pump up to, to the ground instead of the storm in the event the storm's overrun. And those are the kind of details that a person needs to. Get in place and our home inspection system should catch that for new construction, but for old construction, it's. That, that's difficult. It's homeowner beware and they need to know the details of their homes.
Okay. Thank you, administration. Uh Councilor Taylor, so your hand go up.
Sure, um since I have to explain it anyways, maybe I'll just put forward the motion I was thinking about. If Jim could put it up. Uh yeah, that administration for this topic to the next regular council, me with the option for the town to pay. Fifty percent of the cost of backflow preventers for the ten affected residents on Collins Road. Sure. As far as the rationale, uh the reason why I thought that might be the fair thing to do is uh. Have either the town or the residents engaged in gross negligence with respect to this sewer backup problem and the rain event of July two thousand twenty-two? I think the answer is absolutely not. No, nobody's done anything uh overly negligent. That being said, could the residents in the town have done things differently? That would have prevented the problem. The report we were given certainly says that there were. Uh the town could have dealt with the low line manhole covers and made them leak proof earlier. And the uh red residents had their backflow prevent, prevent, preventers that they could have dealt with as well. So I think in the interests of fairness, I'm proposing that we reimburse each affected household or resident. Uh fifty percent of the cost of their backflow valve installation. Uh where they put one in. And my information on the cost of this, this will be about eight hundred and fifty dollars each. Or uh the total claim they've put in is seventeen thousand dollars. Seventeen thousand dollars for this because we had a contributory role. In, in, in this uh problem. And that's why I'm suggesting it would be a reasonable thing. So I think, I think there were two questions. With respect to this action, one's already being addressed and that's illegal implication of the insurers and the potential legal claims. And we've already heard from the town manager of that. The other is with respect to. The residents uh that three thousand other residents will want their back valves uh replaced and they're gonna set some sort of precedent. So could there be? A precedent? I don't think so. This is a very unique set of circumstances where there is being a situation where we've caused a problem. With low line manhole covers that weren't leak proof, that should have been leak proof. That caused a particular problem and we're trying to help uh these fo, folks out with, with that. What there might be as far as uh, you know, there might be one or two residents on Collins Road. That uh had uh the sewer a seek, leak into their basement where they. We don't know about it and they might have put a back valve. So it might be two or three additional ones. But as far as the other uh two thousand nine hundred ninety people in town coming to us. These exact circumstances that this apply don't apply to them. No. No, do you have a low line manhole cover where we cause a problem and we're trying to be fair to you? You're just some guy that wants his backflow preventer uh. Fix, maybe your backflow presenter, preventer for your hosts. Because you, these situations don't apply you, so. That's why I think it's a fair thing to do, because it's a very specific set of circumstances and it's a. It's a way for the town to be fair and address the situation that we partially caused.
Thank you, Councilor Taylor.
And, and by putting that up there. Then we can get that brought back to us uh for the next report. We can get a accurate estimate on what the cost is. And uh any additional information that administration might have on uh on, on what we're proposing.
All right, Council, you have a direction. Uh Council Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The eight hundred and fifty dollars is that half the cost of a um backflow preventer?
Yeah, some of them might have paid more, but on average, my understanding from the first. Is that the claim was seventeen thousand dollars. Ten people put it in, so ten divided by. Seventeen thousand is seventeen hundred and half is eight hundred and fifty. Some of them might have paid more, some of them might have paid less, but on average, that's what I'd be told it works out to.
So second question, did ten people come to you and say? With ten citizens who were affected come and say, could we get some um assistance here?
Wanted.
Thank you, Council Reese.
I myself, I myself in queue um. So we keep talking about claims. My question is. Are we aware of these residents that they claimed in their own insurance? If this is. Their responsibility as a homeowner, did they? Claim they're in their own insurance back in twenty twenty-two? And if they did and were given that money, I have a concern of then us giving them half the money and. Were they gonna give their insurance company back that money? Like I, I guess I need to know more about, because we keep talking about claims. Did these people specifically come to our town and claim seventeen thousand dollars that they're asking us as a town to cover the costs? Of the, the, the situation to administration?
Through the chair, Mr. Council, I'll look to Mr. McLaughlin if I'm incorrect, but I believe that the request was very specific to. Or at least in my conversations with one of the residents was specific to backflow preventers. Because it is an insurance claim. I don't know if insurance would actually. I, I don't believe that the insurance uh company. Compensated them for faulty backflow preventers, because my understanding is that they didn't have. So I believe that that was just a cost that they were uh on their own. Uh at least that was my understanding in having that discussion with the person.
Okay, thank you. Uh, council Taylor.
Not suggesting that we pay this naively. I suggest that it would be appropriately, uh, was the word cabbied it? So that, uh, yeah, we're not gonna pay you if you didn't actually put one in. Right? And we're not gonna pay you if you got your money back from the insurance company.
Thank you.
Mr. McLaughlin? Uh, if I could just get a little bit of, uh, clarity on, on the motion before you do it, on whether or not the fifty percent is. Uh, labor and materials or just materials or just labor. I'm just, from the conversation, I'm taking that it's labor and materials. But I, I just like that clarity in the motion.
Sure. You want me to put fifty percent of the total cost of the back?
Total would be fine, or labor and material cost would be fine.
Sure. Can you just add the word total in front of cost? Please, that was my intent.
In front?
Yes.
Uh, council Reese and, or sorry, council, then council Reese.
Uh, thank you very much. I'm just, and I apologize if I missed it. Uh, the claim that's been identified with this total. Do we have access to any of that information in terms of what this looks like right now? Like where that? What that number actually is? Like where does it exist for council?
Counselor Taylor.
I think that's what this will do. We'll put this and we'll get this information to come back and we'll get. I go, I go, I have what the person put the claim in, told me the amount is. But administration will have time to do the research to make sure that that's the actual amount.
Counsel Reese, oh, sorry.
No, no, if I could go back in the queue, I have something separate.
Counsel Reese.
Okay, two things. Uh, small thing, should it be, uh, that committee refer this topic or administration?
Should be committee. Thank you, council.
Okay, second thing is, how much time is this gonna take for administration? We have budget coming up. We have a lot of stuff. That our administration is working on right now. So I'm just wondering how much time? Will this take from administration away from them doing their work for during right now?
Through the chair, I think that's. Difficult question at this point in time. I, I, I don't know how, uh. There is some accurate detail on a cost. I mean, material costs would be. Simp- simpler, um. Um, but the, the actual installation cost, you know, just depending on all the different differences and. Um, how they had to be installed or whether they had to, uh. Chip concrete or, you know, there's all sorts of different ones as well, so. If all of those receipts have been submitted to, uh, uh, there is one resident who has been speaking on behalf. I, I don't know if that information is available. Or we would have to work with, uh. Uh, all of the homeowners to try and, uh, dictate those costs.
Okay, thank you, council Reese.
So my concern is we're just, we're giving this a two week turnaround to get information back to us. And it's just another action item added to our action item file. So, is I you?
Okay, uh, I got myself in queue and then council Taylor, or sorry, council, pardon, I'm, I'm. You're next.
Oh, okay, uh, thanks, um. The missing piece of information for me on whether or not I can support the motion, uh, on the floor. It, it sort of revolves around, uh, negligence and I suppose it ties also to a, a potential legal opinion. So in the report, when I did a word search through it. In the, in the report itself, I, I couldn't find the word negligent at all, one way or the other. Um, but when we are referred to the appendix flow chart for, you know, decision making and insurance. Uh, perspective, negligence is a big part of that. So I. I don't know what impact, um, this potential motion has on. You know, whether or not, you know, were we negligent? To what degree were we or were we not negligent? Can administration speak to that or would this report? And then potentially in camera, I, I suppose would also be an option, provide us with. Uh, additional information to that because that would impact very much how I, I would support this movement forward.
Mr. McLaughlin? Uh, so my interpretation of that when I, when I wrote the report is. Were we maintaining our system or was there any maintenance activities that we weren't properly conducted? Conducting that would have attributed to this and I came to the conclusion of no, there was no maintenance. And then the second part of it is. Did we know about the potential problem and failed to do something about it? And the answer to that is no, we didn't, we didn't know. This problem hasn't happened before. We hadn't, uh, you know. No one on staff knew that these manholes were in a sag and could have that potential in a bad rainstorm. And, and, and so we weren't negligent because we didn't know, know that that was a potential to happen. And, and so we didn't fail to do any.
May I ask a follow up, Mr. Chair? Um, so again, I'm, I'm inclined to support this, uh, this direction. Really so that I can see what the option would look like. Again, uh, one of the other missing pieces I have though is, um. Would we get, uh, information in this potential report that would include? To what degree we're exposing ourselves, um. If we went forward with this in terms of action, uh, in terms of creating, uh, a, uh. Oh gosh, I just lost the word. Precedent, thank you very much. Yeah, precedent.
Through the chair, if I could. I, I don't know if there's any legal opinion because precedence really is a, um. I would say it's more of a medical consideration. Council has the authority to make those decisions. But it's, it makes it difficult when you've done it for one and not for others and, you know, municipalities. Strive to make sure that that becomes the case of what you are going to do for one. You have to do for everyone. But I, it's not to say that we can't deny. Similar claims in the future, um, but it does make it. Um, I, I would say more difficult to defend. My perspective on it and for council is, you know, and I. You know, my caution is the exception soon becomes the rule once we start down this road. Uh, because I think in any situation where this comes up in the past, I think we could do a report. And we could find that our system is not perfect in every way. Um, you know, I, there's some, some major or some minor. Things with our infrastructure, um, you know, we could have implemented upgrades to it, um, but even if we. Know that these exist and we don't do anything about it, if I don't believe that it would meet the. Uh, the criteria of negligence, uh, but I think if you look at any piece of our infrastructure. It's not perfect, right? You know, I think there's going to be some advances about it, but you know. The, the trigger on whether you're negligent is. Are you acting in good faith and are you doing whatever it's a whole person to do? I believe that this report said that we were. Is our infrastructure perfect and could we do upgrades to it to try and, uh. Combat this, we certainly could. But I don't think that. My perspective is it doesn't place the responsibility off the municipality.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Council good. Uh, council Taylor, council LeRaj and council Reese, I just wanna, you know, we, we've. If you've got something new to bring, great. If not, if we haven't even discussed, uh. We could limit it. I've had some counselors that have not weighed in yet on this one particular, so if you choose to please do. Uh, so council Taylor?
Yeah, my comments related to something I haven't said, uh. I use the word gross negligence deliberately because that's what I believe the standard is for these kind of things. Do, do I even think that we're negligent? Do I think that the homeowner's negligent? I've already said no. It's just that there's a report that says that we could have done something different and. Because we didn't cause a problem and I think this is a fairness thing to me.
Thank you, council LeRaj.
Thank you, um, so, uh, and, and I find this confusing all the time. So one in five, one in fifty years. I mean, things have changed. I mean, I keep hearing that, well, now we've had. You know, two, one in a hundred storms in the past three years. So is this beginning now to impact? The standard, like is that one in five, is it the same today as it was five years ago?
Through the chair, um. Uh, I, I would say that those do change because you, you're looking at averages and so. A one in five year average can change a lot quicker than a one in fifty year average. So i- i- yes, they would be changed, but. At the time they were designed and the time they were built, they were designed to those standards. And so the one in five is for the storm sewer and the idea of that is, I mean, if you were gonna build it to. You know, a higher standard, it costs more money, especially when it's developers doing that work. You, you, you know, you wanna be cogn- cognizant of the cost you're cau- causing on. But the idea is, is that you will have storm events that will, uh. Overwhelm the storm. And then it flows over ground. To get to the creeks and, and stuff and then the, the, that infrastructure is to one in fifty. And, and that's, that's sort of how the drainage standards have been. Been defined.
So I guess as a follow up, then, so this, the, the system though, um. And I guess I'm including the manhole covers in this was, was this? Designed, when it was designed? With the standards of that they in place? Um, or are these? Did subsequent to design, did, did these manhole sort of sink?
Through, through the chair, um. I don't believe that they have sank. I think that there is, uh, sometimes the, uh. The topography of what you're dealing with doesn't allow you to put manholes always at high spots. Uh, you know, so you wanna be paying attention to manhole placement, but this is not an uncommon instance where you get a. Greater than one in, one in five year storm event and your, uh. And you, uh, and your water flows over ground and it does flow over manhole. It's also com- compounded by the additional available capacity. Of the sewer in that area, if you read the report, is not a lot. There is some additional capacity of the sewer, but it's not a lot. It's running close to. It's running, it's running close to its capacity and so that's another added thing, um.
So these instances probably exist throughout our community.
There is probably other instances that we're not aware of and, and it's not till they, it did, till it happens, they become aware.
Thank you. All right, uh, council Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I cannot support this motion. I find that it's, um. It's vague. It's not requesting additional information that will fill in the gaps that I have. So, um. It's basically just proposing on the next regular we pay.
Yep.
So.
Okay. Uh, I have myself and, uh, anyone else, uh, once again in queue. Um, I can't support it either. Uh, preferably what I'd like to see, so far I've only heard. Uh, one person, um, I would prefer to see that if. We have ten residents that they bring it through administration, administration bring it to council to be considered. So far, I, uh, as far as I know, there could be. Residents that say, hey, it's my fault, it's my doing and, uh, you know, so. I would prefer it that way, uh, rather than this route, uh, if that's the case and then we could consider it. Uh, but with this, I just don't have enough information to know and I, I'm a little, I'm leery of, of the fact that if we. Uh, if, if there, that responsibility onto the homeowner, uh, I have that responsibility like any other homeowner. I don't know either, uh, which I probably should have didn't find out, right? So knowing this, so that, then itself, I, I feel bad for it. It happened, but. We have this accountability there, so I can't support it the way it is at this point. So, thank you. Hey, council, anyone else? Uh, CEO.
Thank you, Chair. If I could, I just wanna, uh, make a point of clarification. So we do, we have been working for, uh, from administration's perspective with. One resident, um. But he has been communicating back to the other residents and there's a. He, it's certainly unofficial because it's not an organization, but there is a. An unofficial understanding, at least from us, that the, um, the gentleman that we've been working with is speaking on behalf of the other residents. Uh, now we haven't gone to the, the due diligence of going around and asking all ten, but, um. But, uh, but that has been kind of the arrangement.
Thank you. Counsel Reese.
Thank you, sir. Quick question. So has this fellow come to council because he's received no satisfaction from administration? Like, how, how did it? End up here? I, I mean, I know how it ended up. Here. But. You have been communicating with this fellow?
Yeah, uh, the chairs, members of council. I, I think this was a matter of, you know, this, this was a avenue that. They wanted to put it forward. Um, we informed that, that if that was the case, that that would happen to be a council decision, uh, to, to compensate them for. Uh, for backflow preventers isn't a. An unbudgeted, uh, decision that I can make. So if they did want, uh, that course of action, I think we're council's.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. All right, so this matter is, if I mean that we can call this the question now, we've had, uh, plenty of time to discuss, so if we could see it, please. The direction. Thank you. Uh, direction states that the committee refer this topic to the next regular council meeting. With the option for the town to pay for fifty percent of the total cost. Of the backflow preventers for the ten affected residents on Collins Road. Council, if you can please vote now. Uh, thank you, and that is defeated with counselors Magoon and Taylor in favor. And pause, Stashik, Reese and Burris, yes. Thank you, council. Council, is there any other matter in regards to this information item or? Direction? Recommended directions. Counsel Stot.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move the council accept the engineering report on college, Sam, Carrie, Sue, the regulation.
Thank you, counselor Stashik. Uh, council, we have a direction, counselor Taylor, so your hand pop up there. Do you have a?
No.
Comment on this?
Okay.
Council, any other comments? Questions? All right, then we'll call this the question, the committee accept the engineering report on college, sanitary sewer for information. Okay, and that is very unanimous. I was waiting for something. I know. If I may, I have an administrative question now. And I know this isn't regular, but we've made this direction with committee. Um, nothing stops the residents to potentially bring forward, uh, the council at a later date. To reconsider and consider this, or is because we've made this motion that that? Changes for future?
Um, to the chair, to members of council, that. We can still consider this, but it would have to be within the parameters of a procedural bylaw, but it's. But there is a process for reconsidering items, um. If, if that were the case, you know, we would. We would look to the agenda prep committee to decide if they'd like to come in as an delegation and speak to themselves, but, um. But we will have that conversation with, uh. With those residents.
But then if I made, then it's a committee. Uh, i- is that binding as much as it would be in, in regular council, just procedurally?
Through the chair, members of council, I, it's not, uh. It's not binding the same way.
Okay.
Um, you know, whether we decide that we wanna follow the procedure by law and reconsidering of a matter, um. We certainly still could and I would recommend that. But. I, I believe that there would be some ability for relaxation. In, in that circumstance.
Okay, thank you. Counsel LeRaj.
And I guess before we move on, I guess they did make some recommendations. We do have these low man. Is this gonna be part of budget coming up then? I mean, obviously, these are things now we do know about them. So if we didn't deal with them, I guess, make us make, so I guess this is gonna be part of budget come forward.
Through the chair, uh, committee, so on the, the manholes that are in the low line area. Uh, sealing them and grouting them, that's a fair bit of work that, that would be coming forward, maybe, you know, capital cost thing. But there, they sell these, uh, inserts. That just go in on top of the man, manhole, you'll pick the lid off, throw in an insert, put the lid on. Uh, we, we think they're about three hundred bucks a piece. We're already trying to source them. Because that's something we can do very quickly and get in place, uh, so we're trying to do that. Uh, as we speak, um. But then the further studies that are recommended in that report, we're studying an area, so and that kind of, that would also be. Uh, coming forth at budget time for you to consider, so the only thing we're taking a very, you know, quick action on is the. Purchase of those, uh, manhole seals, because. They're relatively g- easy to do, and at least we can say we're trying to do something, and in my mind, that would stop. Bulk of the water compared to the water that would come in through the sides of the vent.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, counsel, no other in this matter, we're gonna move on to, uh, seven, uh, seven point one to council reports. I'm gonna turn to mine right here to Counsel Statik. Thank you, uh, Counsel Taylor.
I went to the Trans Mountain, um, session this afternoon, and, uh. Big, uh, takeaway for me would be that, uh, we had this, uh, Trans Mountain project come through town. And, uh, probably in order of dollars, it was maybe a twenty, forty million dollar project related to the town, maybe if that at all. But, uh, we think about, uh, the, uh, project that's coming up later, which would be the Mondai project, which has like. Eight hundred million dollars worth of impacts, and then we think about the Trans Mountain project related to the town of Edson. And how that may have impacted them, those might be, uh, things that we wanna start thinking about. Uh, for the future related to the large project that's gonna come, and how's that's gonna affect us? And anything we can do to make it better for our residents or better for Mondai to come, there might be some things we can think of doing or not doing that would help there. Because we go on massive project, this one kinda slipped by and didn't have much of an effect of us, because of where the laydown yards were, so that was my big take home. Thanks.
Thank you, um, Counsel Taylor, Counsel LeRoz.
Uh, nothing to report, except my manager's gonna be home on Thursday, and man, am I ever happy.
Thank you, uh, Counsel Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, on Sunday, I attended the World Suicide Prevention Day at the Guild. I gotta say a really big thank you to, um, FCSS, to Janice Baxter from Bridges, to Hannah Fitzgerald from HIV Options. And a very big thank you to Christopher Marks, who was a keynote speaker at that event, who. Who today is a success story, um, very, very informative session. One thing I didn't read in the newspaper, and I certainly hope it's not true, is that Alberta needs. Enough for suicide, and hidden needs for suicides among municipalities. I, I, I hope I read that well. Um, so that was Sunday, very happy I attended. Today, I attended the Trans Mountain wrap-up, I found it very informative, and I'm sure others will speak to it, so, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Counsel Reese, uh, Counsel McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, nothing to report.
Thank you, uh, for myself, um, I too attended Trans Mountain. Um, I really appreciate, though, their, their, their due diligence in trying to learn from the projects and, uh. The, uh, and it, it wasn't so much, because some of us were not around when it all started. Uh, but they wanted to gather information for future projects, but I agree with Counselors, uh, Taylor. Um, you know, it really opened the eyes to. Uh, this was a project that spanned many communities, where this project we're gonna be seeing is just in our community, and, uh, the additional. Cost that could be from, you know, where people are going to stay and live, uh, for the time period, uh, you know, the contractors to. Uh, the fact that our grocery stores and other services, and I think another one that, uh, is important too, to consider is our healthcare system. Uh, you know, the amount of, now, Trans Mountain, uh, did report that their entire project. Which I find, I'm not, maybe it was for the quarter, I, I'd have to see that they're gonna do a final for the, uh, for everything, but. Uh, they had no medical services needed or ambulance services, but, you know, when I think of how long that's gonna take and the amount of project and the. Fact that, you know, what kind of impact will that have on health services and medical services? Uh, so there's a lot to consider and think about, and a lot of planning, that I'm hoping can, you know, be part of the conversation in the future of that organization, so. Um, and if I may, to the question that I, I would re-read that. Counsel Reese, in regards to the percentages, because I, I don't believe, or I've never. My personally and professionally heard that, so, yeah, so. Uh, okay, uh, moving on then to Chief Administrative Officer reporting a status report, Counsel, I'm asking, or CEO can ask?
Thank you, Chair, uh, to the rest of council, my, uh, the August reports, depending what we did in the package for your review, if there's any questions that you have. Um, the one thing I'll say is, the end of August typically is, uh. The end of many of our summer programs, so that's, uh, usually is switched from August to September is a big one. Uh, you know, the ice is going in, the summer programs are, uh, summer programs are shutting down for another year. And, uh, and many of our summer staff are, uh, uh, departed at this time, so it was a big transition and we're. Uh, we've transitioned to the fall season, but if there are any specific questions, happy to answer.
Hey, thank you, CEO, I think, counsel, is there any questions, uh, coming from? CEO Nastics August twenty twenty-three operating hours, Counsel Taylor?
Fourteen thousand five hundred for the low-income dress pass program, is that the grant, or is that? You're still money.
Uh, it's through the chair and council, that was a grant that we received to support that program.
Good prevention.
I, I can't say with full confidence where the, uh, the funding came from, but.
Counsel, any other questions, CEO? Hey, uh, just for me, you know, again, I really appreciate this, it's very detailed, uh, very happy to see a number of different, uh. Initiatives, um, I guess I do have one question in regards to bylaw, and I know we've talked about it before, but. You know, we're many, many months into the Airbnb bylaw, and, um. Are the residents that are not living in their, in their homes that are using, are they being ticketed if they are not complying with our bylaw at this time?
Good, Chair, yeah, yes, uh, tickets have been issued, and, uh. There, beginning, we responded to complaint basis, uh, we've looked into, uh. Airbnbs or, or short-term rentals that are advertising, uh, but have not obtained a business license, and they have been taken.
Okay.
And, uh, many of them have been inspected to date, so we're still getting them trickling in. Uh, so we are getting compliance in that area.
Excellent, good to hear.
Correctly, through the chair, just add to that, we did do a, um. Uh, it would say, uh, a blitz early on, where we tried to get all of the, uh, the homes. Um, and we have, I, I believe dealt with all of those, um, but. The, um, short-term rentals are popping up very quickly, so we have another, um, we'll say a sloth to do. Pretty soon, and if not, staff are already, already working on it, but it is a, it is an ongoing thing, but, uh, we do think that we've made some. Some big progress in addressing at least the majority, but we can provide the specifics on, on an update on that file, but I don't have.
Yeah, that's fine, thank you. Okay, counsel, there's no other questions on the operating highlights, uh, we do have two items, eight point one and eight point two in closed session. We wouldn't like to make the motion. We're actually, Counsel McGee.
Like to move that we go into closed session, uh, yeah, that's it.
Counsel? You know, the direction or motion, you see that? Oh, thank you.
Well, is it not showing up?
It should, yes. So we have a direction, the committee move into closed session at five thirty-one PM, but they need a five-minute break. Counsel, please vote now. And that is here unanimously, thank you, everybody.